Rachel King's application for taxicab livery license for Charles River Service, Inc. Consideration and possible action on the appointment of Elisa Kay as a part-time recording secretary for the Finance Committee. Consideration and possible action on the cable television license with Charter. Consideration and possible action to accept a donation from the Federated Church of Sturbridge and Fiskdale in the amount of $500 to the Sturbridge Senior Center. Consideration and possible action to accept a donation from the Public House in the amount of $92 to the Veterans Fund. Old business, new business, correspondence, Citizens Forum Executive Session. Then we will adjourn. Okay. Public service announcements. Ian?
I have none.
Mary? Jamie?
No.
And I have none. Okay. We have a half a minute to sing.
Actually, did you want to remind everybody tomorrow's the last day to register to vote?
You can.
Yeah, so tomorrow's the last day for everybody to register to vote for the town election, and you can do that right here at the town hall.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have 6:30 for it. Take that long to read the notice. Chase isn't here. Does somebody else want it? Oh, yeah, we'll do that next time, too. Okay, do you have the?
I guess I have it handy right here. I used to do this, though. Now, Mary?
Yes.
Notification is hereby given that an application has been filed by Gito's?
Gito's.
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 Sorry, sorry. Gito's Brick Oven Pizza, LLC, for a new liquor license at the premises currently located at 367 Main Street, Sturbridge, with the Sturbridge Board of Selectment in accordance with Mass General Lodge, Chapter 138. A public hearing will be held on Monday, March 21, 2022, at 6:35 PM. This hearing will be held at Veterans Memorial Hall, Sturbridge Town Hall, Main Street, Sturbridge, and it's dated March 10, 2022.
So you said those are not all new to meet them?
Okay. Brick Oven Pizza, Inc.
Okay, corrected that. Okay, and Michelle, the green cards. Michelle, the green cards came back. That's why you have the?
I have copies in my room.
Yeah. Okay, would you like to come down and explain, please?
So we're just looking?
Name for the?
Sorry.
That's okay.
Jenna Kedopolis. So I'm going to be the manager of Gito's. We're just looking to do brick oven pizza, seafood, ice cream. We're adding an outdoor patio on the OSB side. We're also going to do a full bar and takeout ice cream window. So that's the plan. We're hoping to be open by August is right now what we're shooting for.
Okay, questions from the board?
Just that we have a lot of residents asking, so I think that's good news for you guys.
Yeah, we're very excited. Everyone seems excited, so, yeah.
Okay, now the benches on the Main Street side. That's basically for the ice cream people?
Are you talking on?
Main Street. Right on Main, not near the hotel.
Yeah, just for the waiting. Yep, that's the front one, just for waiting.
And also the patio, it says refer to the civil plans. Did we get those?
I have, there's a whole stack of papers, yes. I have everything in there. Do you want to?
Yeah, just that one. Are you going to serve alcohol out there?
We will be serving it on one of the paddies, not the ice cream window take outside, but on the other side, yes, we do plan to serve alcohol out there, correct?
Okay, because, you know, as the License and Bureau, we need to see to make sure it doesn't have easy access for teenagers.
It will be gated off. It will be an area that's gated off.
Even if there's just one, Michelle.
Did the work already start indoors or?
Done all the demo work. We're waiting on the building permit, so that shouldn't take much longer.
Okay, how many seats are you going to have all total inside?
Inside, it will be 113.
Okay, because I know the planning board already approved, and they approved the parking, too.
Yep, the patio as well, yep. The parking spots aligned.
Well, that's okay. I should have called you on it, but we can, you can get it to us, because if we approve, we can approve pending.
So your menu's going to be totally different than your other place?
Yes, yep. So we won't have mac and cheese or anything like that. It'll be a little different.
Had my family want to know that, so.
Yes.
We all have our favorite meals, where you get where, what, you know.
Okay, anything else from the board?
No, it sounds great.
I know. It is a public hearing, so anyone in the audience have a question or a comment? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, now a motion on the license request.
I can do it. What was it? You wanted to review the civil plan?
Yeah.
Subject?
For the outside patio.
Subject to review of the plan of the outside patio has discussed, which we don't anticipate any problems with, but subject to review. I move that we approve the application for Gito's Brick Oven Pizza Incorporated for a new liquor license at the premises located at 367 Main Street in Sturbridge, as heard today.
Is there a second?
I'll second Jamie's motion.
A discussion? All in favor? Okay, we have those plans, so Michelle can just get it to us. You don't have to worry. And if there's any problem, which I doubt there will be?
Yeah, she has my email. She just knows. Perfect, thank you.
Might just fill your application after just changed this. Oh, that's your landlord, never mind. That is an LLC, forget it.
Ammar Realty, LLC.
Yeah, no, that's my mistake.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have time reports. We have?
Well, maybe I can start. I know that Inspector's aware of it, maybe he's on his way, I don't know. You have a draft of the warrant. I know that there are, as I mentioned to the board, there are still some numbers that need to be changed and need to be refined, but really the idea of the draft at this point is to give you the scope of what's out there, and in case you have any questions, I would just refer you to the last page with the placeholders that we have. 501 Main Street Parking Lot, which I'll talk about in a second. Two other land issues. The Main Street Pump Station, which, you know, in meeting with Shane and Butch, they would like to move forward with that, and we're in discussions with Ty and Bond finishing off the rate study, and Barbara will be working on the rates and what impact that might have on the rates, as well as potential for some additional capital improvement items from sewer and water, which we were recently made aware of. Some of them feel like they have some short timelines to be fixed and could possibly have an impact on the operations of the plant, so I've talked to Shane and Butch about putting a priority list together and, you know, what we need to look at in the short term and long term. And also, the library HVAC project, the board's aware the price of that has gone up substantially, so we need to revisit that, discuss that with the building inspector and the fire chief, and just see what additional options we might have and what the cost drivers are there, particularly because of the potential to have to put in a sprinkler system.
Well, going through this quickly, though, on page five, Article 9.
Mm-hmm.
It's just a typo in the heading. It should be historic.
Yes, well, that's me. I know, it does, it does need a little work. I've been anxious to get this to the board and?
No, that's understandable. But also on page six, Article 11, Community Preservation Seed Money for Housing Trust. The explanation box has nothing to do with that.
Right, yeah. In fact, I did talk to the town planner about this today, and she's going to, they're going to be meeting with the CPC next week to see whether these are even going to go forward. I just, I just plugged this in and?
Okay, I had to read it a couple of times and I?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, quite a few things need to be?
You're busier than I am, so don't worry about it.
Well, there's, I'm hoping to have this in final form in a week. I probably shouldn't stick my neck out like that, but I know Barbara's been working furiously to finish off the numbers with everything that's going on, you know, recruiting a town accountant and everything else, so we're hoping to have this ready shortly in, in final form. But there still need to be some discussions about a few of these placeholders.
Yeah. Quite a bit of discussion.
Speaking of the budget, I mentioned at the last meeting about the typical Saturday evening that's been had on the budget. We were looking at, and I know Barbara has talked to the Finance Committee about doing this Thursday, the 31st. I think we were, had been looking at the 29th, but I believe there's a candidate's night that night and some other meetings that are going on. So with the board's approval, we can schedule that and do that on Thursday, the 31st, probably starting at 7 o'clock, if that's convenient.
Or even earlier, if the workers can make it.
I think that there's some issues with the Finance Committee attendance, which is why I was told 7 o'clock might be the optimum time.
Okay, how's it look?
That works for me.
Ian, Mary?
Sure.
I think so.
Jamie? Okay.
It's March, right? March 31st?
Yeah.
Yep.
As well as the DPW Director Committee started the last week, the Building Committee for the Senior Center began meeting. Excellent committee. Charlie Blanchard's the chair, as he is with the DPW Committee. So as I mentioned to them, I'm anxious to be able to pass this off to them, so I'm sure they'll do an excellent job. Tomorrow, we'll be starting, opening up bargaining for the renewal of the contract with the DPW Union. It's another thing I would like to get started on and hopefully clear up. Not a lot of progress made on fire, admittedly, but we're still working on that, and I'll keep the board posted. I think tomorrow will just be basically ground rules and things like that, but I'll be keeping the board informed about how that's progressing, and hopefully that's something that can be, won't be, won't be particularly difficult.
No, we've had, I don't want to say easy time, we've had friendly relationship with the DPW when we negotiate.
Yeah, well, we certainly want to keep it that way. I did mention to the board the news that I had gotten about the earmark that we had been made aware of regarding the parking lot at 501 Main Street. And so I guess this will be linked to how the board wants to proceed on 501 in particular, but my understanding, and I know the Chief of Staff for Senator Goby's office is working on this, is that we can change the use of that, and it sounds like the state is fairly flexible on what the $50,000 can be used for. The issue is that the only way, my understanding now from the information that I got Friday, was that the only way to extend the use of this money past June 30th is if it's linked to 501. If it's used at 501 Main Street, then it's possible for us to get an extension. However, as you know, that depends on what action is going to be taken at the annual town meeting, and, I mean, just my opinion is that if, for whatever reason, that article doesn't pass, then we're going to be up against it as far as having to go through the state, get a contractor, and be able to spend $50,000 on another use by the end of June.
You have more? I just wanted to add to that.
Sure.
The ARPA Committee is looking very seriously at using ARPA funds to recommend that to the Board of Selectmen use ARPA funds. At our last meeting, we met with the consultants, and they said, you know, that would absolutely qualify. So we haven't, I mean, I don't know how the rest of the committee feels, but there were a lot of positive feedback of using ARPA funds for it.
Mary, do you know the dollar amount in the ARPA funds that we have that we can?
Well, we only have half right now, because we're going to get half more in the fall. And Barbara did send an itemized list, and I think, what do we add, like?
Something like, yeah, seven or eight hundred thousand, yeah.
I was going to say 740 or something. So we have a meeting, and I think at this meeting, we're going to be voting on what some of the projects that we might want to recommend to the board, because we thought that was, you know, even when you looked at the surveys of things that people wanted to try to get residents' input, a lot of ones said, you know, to benefit the businesses in some way, and when we purchased that tape two years ago, there was a lot of support to have it. I know the Table 3 Manager spoke and said they don't have parking enough at Avellino. It's a good way to bridge our trail system when we build the bridge to our commercial end in town, and we've been wanting to do that for a long time to try to take advantage of people who park there. When you can see a trail, you know, you might be more willing to use it, and then you go into town and shop and eat. So there was a lot of support, we thought, for using some ARPA funds for that. Encourages outdoor activity and helps businesses at the same time.
It just needs to be explained a whole lot better than?
Right.
At town meeting, which I guess we take the responsibility for that.
Right.
We just assumed it was something easy, because people had voted earlier to acquire.
But to the extent that ARPA funds offset it.
Yeah.
And we won't, we weren't really able to vote at our last meeting, because we also, the health agent is going to look again and determine what exactly he needs for public health nurses, which is obviously, you know, has to come before any projects. He doesn't, it's not, that's not going to be a huge amount, because we had already put some money aside, but it looks like he'll run out of that, so.
Yeah, I thought they got a reserve fund transfer on that already.
They may have, yeah.
I don't know, but, but Mary's right, they may need some substantial money. We meet tomorrow at 5:00.
Yeah, we meet tomorrow. Oh, Tuesday. Why do I thought, I thought it was Wednesday?
Tomorrow, yeah.
Oh, I know, I'm getting it mixed up with special events. Yes, tomorrow, tomorrow at 5:00.
Too many committees.
Oh, my goodness, yeah.
Okay, anything else, Bob, on your report?
No, I think that's it, only that also I know the Economic Development Director is working on a grant to provide for that link with the, with the trails, the bridge and so forth. That's all I have at this point, yeah.
Okay, any questions on any of that? Now, was Nelson in his office or?
I don't know.
I reached out to Cindy, and she said he wasn't feeling well.
Oh, okay.
So he's not coming. Just found out.
Thank you. Well, we did get half a report.
Yeah, that's all I have is I?
Oh, yeah, no, it's not you. We?
You can schedule him for the next meeting.
Yeah, this part we didn't get last time, and I mentioned it, but we didn't get his written report and everything.
That I didn't receive.
What amazes me is some of the printers around here, they print so teeny.
That was, that was the?
Yeah.
That happens with Excel. If you put Excel on one sheet, yeah, you have to play with it all the time.
Well, they ought to play with it.
It comes out on four pages.
Yeah, I have to, when I do exhibits, I run into this problem.
Someday I'm going to read something that's not even there. So schedule him for the next meeting, please, Bob.
Yes.
Okay, also, though, I was going to address it with Nelson, because it is campaign time for election, and I know a lot of people complained last year about signs being in different places, and signs are only allowed on private property. They're not allowed on state property. They're not allowed on town property. So can you remind Nelson of that, because there's already a few signs popping up where they really shouldn't be?
Yep.
Need the owner's permission. Okay, so next on the agenda, we have the appointment of Constantine Dino Economist as a part-time custodian with the Facilities Department. Hey, do you know, I take it you like to be called Dino?
Yep.
Okay, can you give us a little of your background for the people at home?
Yeah, sure.
You might have to move that a little closer. We can hear fine.
All right, I'm retired. I worked for the state for 31 years in the Maintenance Department. So, and what else did I do? I worked part-time while I worked for the state. I worked part-time for the town of Bensa for five years, and the town of Leicester for two years, and Holy Cross for five years while I worked for the state. So I worked 10 years for the old building in Worcester, 16 years in East Brookfield, and then the rest I did in the new Worcester courthouse, so.
Sounds like you weren't ready to retire.
No, not really. And so I looked up online, and this opportunity came up, and 18 hours is perfect, because I can't work more than 20 hours a week or something like that. It'll affect my retirement, so.
Yeah, the state has lots of regulations.
Yeah, so I lived in town for 22 years, and there I am, ready to go.
And you've met with Robin?
Yes, yeah, a couple of times, yeah.
Yeah, Robin and I conducted interviews. It's been duly advertised and so forth, and I know he's fairly flexible on his hours. It seems that the schedule will work out well for him and the town resident, and so, you know, we both recommend him.
Okay, any questions from the board? Someone willing to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the appointment of Constantine Economist, part-time custodian with the Facilities Department at an hourly rate of 1738.
I will second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, congratulations.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
You going to walk home?
No.
Too windy.
Yeah, that's a good excuse, too windy.
Are you starting right away?
Uh.
Well, I think it's just contingent on a few things, which was in the letter that was sent to him, pre-employment, physical and the usual things, now that the job offer's been made.
I got a physical tomorrow. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. It was nice meeting everybody, seeing everybody, and thank you very much.
We'll see you around the farm.
Welcome aboard.
All right, thank you.
See you around the farm.
Yeah, farm. Showing that I'm really a New Englander.
Yeah, but I've never heard that expression.
See you around the farm?
Yeah.
Isn't that an expression?
What is?
See you around the farm?
See you around the farm?
See you around the farm, see you around campus.
Yeah, see you at campus.
See you at church.
I thought it was.
See you around the bar.
Wait, I'm going to Google that later.
Okay, next we have consideration and possible action on Rachel King's application for a taxicab slash livery license for Charles River Services Incorporated. Would you please come down, Rachel? Okay, tell us a little bit about yourself, please.
I mean, I'm excited to be here. I have never been to a town hall meeting before about me. I don't know what to say exactly, but my family came over on the Mayflower. They fought in the Civil War on the union side, so I like being in here. My grandfather fought in World War II. I come from a really good family. He got a Purple Heart. My mom's a pastor of the Oxbridge Church of Mendon, and I'm, I'm an art teacher. I like, in the past, I've been an art teacher. I still teach like, like freelance for a private art school in Main Bar Harbor, and I've been a cab driver in the past in Framingham. I'm an excellent driver, knock on wood. I love people. I love to drive. It's my passion, like just being out on the road, like it's just freedom to me, and I'm just an all-around, I'm a good person. I'm a, I'm a dedicated person. I'm a creative, interesting, intelligent person. My name is Rachel Joy King. My mom says I bring joy to everyone I meet, and I just hope that you can approve my Hackney license so I can be a taxicab driver again. I think it's a good change of careers. I was working at Autozone for a little while, and I just, I prefer to just work for Eric at the Charles River Taxi Company.
Very good. I see the no traffic violations, and then the, could be the chief signature or the lieutenant's. Nobody writes anymore. Approval. Any questions from the board? Okay, somebody want to make a motion then to approve the license?
Sure. I will move to appoint, excuse me, strike that. I move to approve Rachel King's application for a taxicab livery license for the Charles River Services Incorporated.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Good luck, Rachel.
Thank you so much.
Enjoy.
Do I have to go to the police department to pick up my license tomorrow and take pictures and stuff, or how does that work?
I'll sign it now, I'm looking for a copy of it.
Okay, yeah, the police have already approved it.
I'm signing.
It's just for her. Just, wait, you don't have to sign it. Police already signed it.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I said, it's either the chief or a lieutenant, if you can decipher it. Is there opening for teaching of penmanship in town hall?
It's replaced by typing.
I can't type. Next, we have consideration and possible action on the appointment of Eliza, or Elisa Kay, and I'm not even going to try her name.
I know, it's a tough one.
As a part-time recording secretary for the Finance Committee at the hourly rate of 1844.
I think you may all know her better than I do with their newspaper experience, but I can say that she's doing the minutes for the Town Administrator Search Committee and getting rave reviews.
Right.
She's an excellent writer.
Yeah.
Oh, good. But she never looked at a message. I didn't know if it's one of the kids that Charlie talked about, toilets. We're done.
It's public record now.
I think he forgets where I am. Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll move to appoint Eliza Kay as part of, part-time recording secretary for the Finance Committee at an hourly rate of 1844.
I will second that.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, next, consideration and possible action on the cable television license with Charter Communication expiring on April 26, 2025. Bob, your input on this?
Well, I wanted to make the board aware of it. You know, time, time can fly. I don't know how the town has handled this in the past, whether you've established a cable committee, and maybe it'll be left up to the committee on how the process is going to be handled, the ascertainment period, et cetera. I know maybe part of what the cable committee will have input on is whether you want to hire a professional to assist with the process. I know there's someone at KP Law that I've worked with that does this, and there are others out there that will assist communities, particularly on the, you know, the rates that will be charged to the, or negotiated with the cable firm. But, you know, there is time on this, but however the board wants to proceed, whether you want to begin consideration for a cable TV committee?
We know there's people eager to be on the committee, because when we did the Charter Review Committee, people applied thinking it was cable, so.
Yeah.
Well, definitely.
It's a cable.
There's definitely people who are passionate about this, so.
Oh, yeah. Last time we've done it, we did appoint a committee, so I believe that we should appoint a committee and, you know, give them direction. The packet we got from the state was quite informational, so.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll begin the public notification to, you know, recruit.
Yep. I bet you get five immediately. Till they realize we have very little say.
Right.
Without spending a lot of money.
Yeah, I know. Okay. Okay, next we have action to accept a donation from the Federated Church of Sturbridge and Fiskdale in the amount of $500 to the Sturbridge Senior Center. Questions?
Very nice of them. Do they know what they want to use it for?
Senior Center didn't specify.
generous donation.
Well, a lot of it comes from, well, the last one came from some monies they made at the pumpkin.
They donated some of that to the fire department, right?
Yes. Okay, do we have a motion then?
I will move to accept the donation from the Federated Church of Sturbridge and Fiskdale in the amount of $500 to the Sturbridge Senior Center with gratitude.
There a second?
Seconded.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, action to accept a donation from the Public House in the amount of $92 to the Veterans Fund. Questions, comments, motion?
Sure, I will move to accept the donation from the Public House in the amount of $92 for the Veterans Fund with gratitude.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, next, we have old business.
And letters, you know how we do a little thank you note to those businesses?
Jamie, any old business?
I don't think so, no, thank you.
Mary? Ian? And I have none. New business? Jamie?
None.
Mary?
Nothing at this time.
We're quiet tonight.
Well, I can mention one thing. I forgot, my report last week, Chief Grasso and I did the interviews for Deputy Chief, and went very well, very qualified candidates came out of the, out of the Assessment Center. We do have a recommendation. I think the chief is doing some checking now, and it's expected that the appointment will be on your agenda, your next agenda.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, no correspondence from anyone, nor, Michelle, did you get any?
No.
Okay, Citizens Forum? You're always so quiet. Can't you ask something? Yellow. Thank you. Okay, executive session, Mary, you wanna?
Okay. I move that we enter into executive session per Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21.6, which is to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
Okay, so declare, and we will not reconvene in open-
And not to reconvene in open session.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And I go yes.